All right.
Okay, we are recording.
All right, great. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Communications of parents, citizens, and staff. We haven't received any reach outs, I don't believe. Mr. Metz was here to talk to us. He might show back up, and if he does, we will reopen communications for him to discuss with whatever he wanted to discuss with us. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Just flying through this thing. EL monitoring report, 2.6 asset protection, that is in your packet. Can I get a motion to accept that said report?
I move.
Thank you, Lauren. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barbara. Discussion.
So again, this is another one, and I'll go ahead and screen share it. So this is another one of our monitoring reports that I am really glad is part of our regular, our regular kind of review of what it is that we do as a school district. And what it really is asking me and the administration to do is to make sure that we're not putting the district at risk for, for many of the things that will cause risk in the district. So making sure that we have proper insurance, making sure that we are audited regularly, making sure that we're not exposing ourselves to unnecessary liability. And so it's really, so as you click through here, whether you're a board member or you are a member of the community, we also include many of the links where this is where we get the information that we're supposed to make sure that we have, things like conflict of interests and public bids, and what school boards actually have the ability to do within a policy governance system. But it also lists information like, like codes of ethics for the school boards and for superintendents and other educators. And then as you get further down, you will see the evidence in the form of links underneath below where you can see our insurance coverages. You can see where we collect our information on facility requests when we, when we hear that there's an issue within the building, how we buy things, including our information about software and keeping things private. So it's, it's also, it's just, it's a, it was actually really fun to put together, even though it's a lot of links and a lot of interpretations. But it's nice to know that we have all of this information available for the community and for the board when they have questions about what it is that we do within, within the central office.
Questions for Renee?
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, then all those in favor of accepting asset protection 2.6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Moving on to governance style, we have our own board monitoring report, 4.3, which is agenda planning. It is in your packet. I don't know if there's anything that you guys want to change. Yes. Oh, sorry, was there a question?
No.
Yeah. Yes, we did.
We did?
Yep. It was that fast. Yeah, see?
Well done.
Well, I know, right? Okay.
Right on schedule almost.
I know. We're catching right up. Okay. All right. I don't see anything necessarily. I mean, the, the agenda planning is to make sure that we get all of our legal stuff done, that we follow our goals for the year, and that we use our work plan, which is essentially what we do. So.
We should change the dates. It says 2023, so it looks like we haven't updated the dates in a couple of years.
Right, yeah, we'll do that. Thank you for that. April 1, April Fool's Day. Okay, I'm hearing nothing. I'm going to assume that we're okay. I'll just change the date. Okay. Community linkage. So first thing I need to tell you is that I heard from Jessica Markowski, due to familial obligation, she has resigned her seat on the board. So we are now looking for another Pittsford member along with our current whiting seat that's open and our at-large position. So I'm going to ask you guys if you want to put it in the paper again, looking for interested parties to write a letter, seeking, asking, or telling us why they want to be on the board and what attributes they could bring to us. And we could nominate them to the board at least until next March. Is that something you'd like to do?
Put it in the paper.
Yeah, or in other ways. I'm sure we can put it on, on social media as well and ask Max to do that.
We had success doing it that way?
Well, you're here. But yes, and Lauren's here. Who else is here from that? So yeah, I mean, we have. So, and it behooves us to have a full board because like tonight, we were waiting for a member to come so that we had a full quorum. So, so yeah, so start spreading the news that we are looking for three board members. That would be great.
Is there anyone at the coffee talks that might be here?
So in, in whiting, perhaps, in whiting, perhaps, I will, I will do my best to improve heavily there. And hopefully, I'm trying to think if we have, I don't know if I have any more scheduled in Pittsburgh, but maybe we can. You know, I think if I just show up at Keith's on a, on a, any morning, I can find people hanging out there, so it would be great. Love those guys.
All right. Summer facilities report and project requests. So that was also in your packet. It's a two-page document. Now, these are the requests, right?
Yeah, so you want me to speak?
Yeah, why don't you speak to those, please?
So these are pretty assertive, pretty, you know, kind of addressing a lot of things. I will tell you that it was very challenging and still is challenging to think about improvements in this building. Because at the same time as we're looking at it, we want to recognize that we don't want to get further behind on maintenance improvements in this building. And we are, you know, actively looking at a middle school model that would encompass some improvements to this building, right? So it's a little bit of, of this. So there, there is the, the most requests, about $623,000 of requests for this facility. And some of them are more important than others. We started with, you'll remember in October or November of this year, you asked us to come with our top five per building. So you'll see we've tried to organize it according to that, started with security and, and went on for other things. And that's what each of these are. The amount in bold is the request that we are asking for you to consider for this summer. So this summer would start literally the last day of school and, and whenever we get it finished. And the reason why we're coming to you now is because we would want to get bids for anything that's over $40,000 as required by Vermont statute, and then be able to get it scheduled. So I don't know if you have any questions, or I, I don't need to go line by line for you. I anticipated a question that you might ask that I forgot to give you was how much, what is the balance in our facility fund? And how much will this use? And so I do have that information. July 1, according to our audit, so that's the best final balance that we have, was $3,051,920. Amber, I can just give you copies of this so you don't have to type it all in. You approved $377,000 around this time. Well, actually, it was later because of budget. But you approved $377,400 last year for last summer's improvements. You also approved $217,000 for the mold remediation. So when those are all said and done, and most of them were probably at about 88 to 85% done, but a couple are still hanging out there, we will have a balance before any current year transfers into the facility fund of $2,457,000. This request, again, the high school being, this building being the largest of them, is a million of that.
Oh, there are a couple of things to be decided, right? So they are not in that number? In whiting, it looks like there's something to be decided.
There's a couple of, there's, anything that's kind of below the bold is just information for you. Some things that we know we should be considering, but we didn't believe they should hit this summer.
Oh, so whiting is all, okay. So whiting is all, nothing's going to happen there.
Right. Well, we are going to do some parking lot replacements, but that's with the general fund.
Okay.
So we've been whittling away at this for some time now, or chopping away at it. What's our plan for, you know, a year or two from now when it's down to zero? So how are we going to fill the coffers again?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I don't, I, I obviously think you have been very good stewards and you have been very conscientious in realizing that a million dollars means a lot to every single one of us. I don't want to make it sound like it's nothing. But on our budget, it's very insignificant. It's within the realm of, of budgeting. It's within like 3%. And you've put that into the facility reserve to kind of keep it up. I don't, I have not yet looked at where I think we're going to end this year. We did at the beginning of the budget, but have not had a chance to do that yet. We will come to you in, in early June. I'm a little confused because I lost a meeting on you guys. So we'll come to you in early June with where we think, or how much more we think we would put into it. In the past, we have shared any current year surpluses. That's what we would have the ability to put into these funds between this fund and the after-school fund. And I'm really happy to report that the after-school fund, now that we have transitioned to the Boys and Girls Club, we wouldn't make a recommendation that you put more money into that. We still have a nice, healthy fund balance. And their program has been completely, essentially self-sufficient. I think in the first month, we paid $265,000 and we haven't paid anything since, which means their incoming revenues have been, have, their expenses have aligned to their revenues. So I would recommend that we continue to do that. I do think that you're right. This is, this is a big list this summer.
I wasn't even implying that because I know it's a, a list that probably should be a lot longer, so.
Well, it definitely should. And I think, thank you for bringing that up. So not everyone is on the facility committee or the middle school committee, but there is a report that has identified over the next five years, about $10 million of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. And that isn't addressed by this.
That's just here at this building. That is not all.
And that's just at this building. Every single building has it. So this is trying to, trying to.
That report's also old, so.
And the costs were, the costs were low when it was old.
So none of these items in OV are on that report? Like new circulator pumps?
That was probably on the report.
Okay.
So if you kind of look at Otter Valley, you know, the first one is really, the first two is really working to finalize the mold situation. So the first one is excavating to prevent drainage from happening, you know, pulling away from the building so it won't drain into it. And then the other one is repairing the stucco. So you can't do a lot with stucco. Might be sort of pretty, or might have been pretty 30 years ago. But you can't power wash it. You can't, you can remove it, you can replace it. Or there is this treatment, which is similar to what you do inside with mold on drywall. You can, what is it called? Bin, that, that really toxic thing that you can put on to kind of capture or stop the mold growth and then paint over it. That is, that is what's on this list. Those top two are the biggest things for that. The next one was something that I think is important, and I bet many of you don't realize that every day our custodians actually rake the sewer, which means they open up the bulkhead, right? Look at that, right? They open up the bulkhead. They have this specific special rake, and they help move the waste. And things that can come through the sewer, whether it's a, a pen or a hair clip or whatever, has to be pulled out and thrown away as it heads down to the, yeah, right? Okay, so I thought, as I heard about this this year, this was something that was really important.
Longer rakes.
To, to buy newer rakes, but no, to actually put in a auger system that would move it along without humans doing that. The middle school bathrooms, that is one that's hard because we know that that is one of the areas that we are looking at potential in the committee, and it's 30 years old. So we're at this, do we do something now? Do we do, knowing that they are 30 years old and definitely beyond their useful life? So, so some of them have crossover. The other one that has kind of crossover on things that the committee has been talking about is the weight room. And I think that it's $25,000. I would very much advocate for that because what that does is it allows us to build a wall so that room can be secured. Right now, it's pretty open, which means students can use it without supervision. By building a wall, they can't use it without supervision. So even though that has kind of both, it's a small number, I think it's a good investment because the reality is we are three at the most optimistic, maybe likely closer to five years before we would do any construction anyways.
$25,000 just to build the wall?
Yeah. It needs a door. It, it, yeah, it's.
Are they cold?
And bending, as they could, need to consider bending as well?
You, you have to because there's no windows. There's, you have to have two means of egress.
That's big.
But yes, the circulator pumps are on both. They are on borrowed time. You know, the ceiling tiles, again, that is kind of a placeholder to look. Maybe there, we know that there may be some halls that won't be adjusted. Maybe we would look to there.
I have a question.
The science labs are on both.
Can we talk about the, the, I mean, the white tiles? Yes, we all want them replaced. I, I get that. But we know that there's water coming into this building from somewhere. And, you know, otherwise, they wouldn't look like that. So my question is, is do we actually start at the top of the building so that we can address any kind of water issues? And then once we know that the water issues might be addressed, then fix the first floor?
So two things. Yes, and. So ceiling tiles start to pick up moisture, both from the top and from here.
Okay.
So some of it comes from actually, just like we all are probably feeling, it's pretty warm in here today, and it gets worse all summer. That type of humidity also gets absorbed up in there. So the, the ceiling tiles come from both ways. The, the rubber membrane roofs are a vein of my existence because where it's leaking and where it shows up are.
Two different places.
Not only, they literally are trying to guess and find where, you know, where the drains are and where it might be coming through. My computer's saying it's time to shut down. We, we know that, and we were concerned in 2015 when we put the solar panels on the rubber membrane roof, right? They're attached. You know, did that create a problem? We are definitely chasing that. I don't know if, I don't remember if in the facility report for Otter Valley, if they said that the roof was at its, the end of its useful life. I don't remember if it said that.
I don't, I don't think it is yet.
Well, I don't think it was exactly young in 2015 when we put solar panels on.
It's leaking, it may be.
I think it was maybe 20, 20 years then, and that was 10 years ago. I, I would want to look that up, but we definitely know that we are chasing rubber membrane roof leaks.
Okay. Well, I just hate to, you know, put up a bunch of white tiles and next thing you know, you're looking at the same brown things again.
Yeah. And then the basketball hoop replacement, I'll tell you, I think that's essential. That's been put on. We've been watching that for quite a few years and trying to put that off as, as long as we can, and I think that's essential.
Is that all the basketball hoops, even the side ones, or just the two main?
I am 99% certain it's just the two main.
Okay.
I'm wondering if my, if I have any friends online. Rich might be able to answer that.
Yeah, Rich is there.
Rich, did you hear that question?
Right now, he's trying to figure out how to unmute.
Right? Right, he's having dinner. I expect one of you to ask me what the Nashaby building updates were. Took me 20 minutes to figure that out, but that's the Nashaby building bathroom update. And so those are original, again, to the Nashaby building, which was in the 80s. So they're pretty tired.
What's the big green storage container out back now?
At Nashaby? I am 99% certain. That, isn't that the generator?
Oh, I don't know.
I think so. I'm hoping Rich will come back from dinner.
Right, he's huge.
Because he's definitely unmuted.
He's unmuted, yeah. Oh, there's, oh, oh. He's a shadow of himself. He's got two. Okay, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Hey, Rich.
I think he's still logging on.
Rich and Richard.
Hey, Rich, if you hear me, you can text me. While he's doing that, one other thing I wanted to talk to you about was if you look at the top of the list at Lothrup, some of those are pretty standard. But the next one after the facility request is talking about the cafeteria bathrooms remodeling. We have an ADA report. There is no ADA bathrooms in that facility. There is a elevator. So we do have a report from the architect, which is, how many years old, Debbie? Five, six?
Oh, from the bathrooms?
Yeah.
Oh, that's about, about five or six, yeah.
Five or six years old. And we wanted to know your thoughts about maybe going to the BURDIT fund and asking them to consider paying improvements. So since we have merged as Otter Valley, we have gone to the BURDIT fund once, and it was this fall. And it was for the OV lights.
Yes, it was.
And they did support it at $20,000. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. It isn't something we are thinking of doing this summer, but I wanted your thoughts or just, I just wanted to bring it out there to see where you'd like us to consider going.
Do we have to do it in order to be compliant?
We, so do we have to and should we are really hard questions. I'd say we should, definitely.
Yeah, because we all have an ADA.
We don't have an ADA, a bathroom in that building.
But aren't we required to, right? That's what I'm thinking.
We're, you're required, you do upstairs? In the main floor?
In the gym, yeah.
Okay, well, Debbie would know better than I do. I didn't think it was.
I think that.
It's a little narrow.
I come to think of it, though, the door may not be wide enough. They made sure the inside was well done, but.
You get kind of grandfathered when you don't do a lot of work to a building. But again, I'm not sure that that's, I, I don't want to make it sound like that's a, a good way to operate. I, we, we think it is a good investment.
Yes, I think it's a good investment, and I think it's an appropriate request for the BURDIT fund.
And if you all agree, what I'll do, because we can't go to the BURDIT fund until you have a full Pittsburgh board.
Right.
But I will then take this to get more information so we could bring a proposal to them that, that has real numbers to it and, and more updated information. I don't know if we're going to hear from Rich. I might have to get back to you about the green building at, at Nashaby. It's not the modular unit you're thinking of. That's not green.
That's right next to the garage. If you get on by the chicken coops, it's basically right straight in the field, right? So they, big gravel driveway, they put it right in the middle.
Shauna responded? What did Shauna say?
Looks like one of those big 30-foot storage containers.
She says it's a storage supply.
Access furniture.
Okay. Any other questions about the facility fund requests?
Need a motion?
Yep.
I move that we fund the facility request in the amount of $1,088,100.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. World language program discussion.
This, yeah, this will be, this will be fairly quick. Just wanted to, since this comes into the purview of my responsibility within the global ends, as we're building our master schedules for next year and looking at our allocations for positions and looking for additional time for our elementary teachers to be able to have extra planning time where they're working on curriculum and data analysis, we are looking at what it would mean for our supervisory union, including the Otter Valley School District, to be able to offer a reasonable amount, or even almost an, well, an equitable, an equal amount of foreign language instruction at every school. Right now, we have a situation based on, I believe, the budget from last year where we have one teacher who's having to visit three different campuses as part of his contract. And so it's really difficult for, for there to be any kind of continuity for the students. And it also leads to a smaller number of students who are able to avail themselves of this language instruction, which will also help with their literacy instruct, their literacy learning as well due to the, the vast amount of wordwork that they're doing within, within the learning. And so I just wanted to bring this, and Debbie, if you have anything that you'd like to add to it as well, having been a principal here, this is something that I think will enable our students to be, to meet the needs of our global ends of global citizenship. In fact, it's very, it's specified that students study a non-native language and study the importance of learning about other cultures. And so that is something that if we are able to provide the opportunity or for our campuses moving into next year where we can create a reasonable schedule for teachers so that schools have adequate foreign language instruction for next year within the current budget, I plan on doing that. And then the following year, coming here with a, a plan that with, again, within our budget, so that that way we're able to offer this in a more authentic way for our schools. So.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of if we're, if, if, you know, this is the direction we want to go, and we want to do it well. And it has nothing to do with the teaching staff, but it's really hard to do something well when you're going between three buildings. It also makes scheduling very difficult, so that's, that's a challenge as well. So one of the reasons that we are, we only have one teacher this year is if you peel back the history, you peel back the history, we've had a hard time getting um, filling the position, so when we're looking at um, building our budget, um, if we haven't filled a position, that's a strategy we've used in the past. Um, but I think that the way to um, the way to make sure that we can have, you know, a really comprehensive program and keep teachers is by providing um, less movement, so ultimately something like a teacher between um, a, a couple of buildings, or mostly at one building, and share like we do our art, it's much more um, feasible for um, it to be a model like what our, our teacher and our library teacher um, does. They go just a small amount to another school, rather than um, be, going amongst all of the buildings, and sometimes in two buildings on one day, and it's really challenging, so. But it may, I would say it may take us a bit of time to grow it, because we wanna make sure that we can um, get the teachers to, we need to hire teachers.
And we need them to be consistent year to year.
Yeah.
We've had a revolving door.
Right.
And I think that's when, when you have a job that's either singular to one campus, or a regular schedule where you're on no more than two campuses.
Right.
With a set amount of time where you're able to build relationships with the kids, um, and provide um, this level of learning, that uh, people will be more drawn to a position like that.
So is it two new positions? What is it exactly that you're proposing?
No, right, right now, if, if we were able to, it would be able to, I think if we're talking, if we were able to find it somewhere, you know, I think we're maybe at half a position.
Well, it's sort of just reallocating um, positions among schools.
Okay.
That we're looking at, so there's.
Is this to give them more time? Give the kids more time?
So what it would do is, it would, it would um, one of the thoughts we had is we'd have a teacher that is like sort of Nashaby OCA, and then one that is uh, Lothrup and Barstow primarily, so it would be shifting around some different pieces, and at that point, we wouldn't go all the way down to kindergarten, we would use them in a way that we can, again, do it well at fifth and sixth grade, potentially fourth based on the schedule, um, and then grow after that, and in future budgets and budget cycles.
Any other questions for Renee or?
Yeah, um, I speak as somebody who had first-year French, it's, I don't know, it seems like five times, I don't know how many times I had it, and I still can't conjugate etra. Um, I had a Dutch roommate who one evening was reading a newspaper and translated the paragraph he was reading into five different languages, four different languages besides English. I wanna know what they're doing right in Holland that we're not doing right. Um, I think it's great that we uh, start kids with world languages, but I'd like to see kids graduate like they do in Norway, say, speaking another language. Um, I don't know if Fernanda has thoughts on this, but um, languages.
I do.
Awesome. Language shouldn't just be a kind of gesture we make, that, oh, we encourage world languages, and we encourage, we encourage, you know, understanding of other cultures. I want kids to be comfortable with it, and, and uh, if we're gonna do it, let's commit to something that's great, and, and have them um, have them as, as fluent as possible.
It's in competition, though, with so many other curricular issues, and so in order for students to learn a second language fluently, they have to see it every day. They have to have it every day. So it's not something that you do in the amount of time that we provide, right? So that's, that's the differential. And the amount of time that we provide is there because we're competing against all these other things that students are learning. So the best model is a model of immersion, where what, in the morning you speak one language, in the afternoon you speak another, and you do your classes in those languages. And that is how you get to be fluent in Europe.
Right.
It's not what happens in America, you know, there's no one happens in the United States. So that's part of the, you know, the, the model is not the model of immersion, and we don't offer it early enough for all students. Kindergarten through second grade is the primary time for picking up a second language.
And I'd also say in the Netherlands.
We can, this doesn't hurt, what we offer doesn't hurt. It, it's not gonna make fluent speakers out of them.
So in the Netherlands, they hear probably three or four different languages as they walk home from school and, and within their school, so they hear it on a regular basis. Whereas, I mean, here, we're part of a French tradition that um, I probably more, I think that's the, is that probably the, the most spoken second language in the state? Perhaps?
Probably still.
Spanish is catching up, so.
Followed by Nepali.
There was a time when it was definitely the most.
And so we're still very close to the, to the, to the French tradition here, so it would make a lot of sense for us to be able to have opportunities for our students to speak uh, French or Spanish uh, along the way, and as I was sharing with our um, with our trainer for the science of reading the other day, uh, the whole aspect of cognates and uh, root words and things like that vastly improve our students' ability to read and their vocabulary words, um, cause if not for that, I would not, uh, I, I could talk about cognates all day, but uh, I won't. So I just wanted to be able to bring this to you, and I, I have this as kind of a thing that, that Debbie and I are kicking around, because we feel like it's important for our students, and we also believe that if we're able to get it to um, its full, um, its full implementation, that we would be able to provide additional opportunities at the elementary level for additional planning time, and at the high school level for more, for more students to be able to reach um, the, the certification that they get for having advanced languages um, and advanced classes, the seal of biliteracy.
Well, some of that leads back to what we said in the last meeting about the block scheduling. I mean, if you, if Fernanda said you gotta see it every day with block scheduling, you might not see it for a whole half a year.
Right.
Yeah, I love that you're pursuing this. Seven years I've been on this board, finally, someone takes the second language seriously. But yeah, the block scheduling is problematic for languages and for math, especially, I don't know what else it's problematic for, but kids only having it for a semester is, I don't know where, the logic behind that, I'd love to know why it's done that way, and if we could fix it. Cause having foreign language and math every other day, but for a whole year, would be far more continuous and make more sense than to have it just for a semester, cause kids just forget the vocabulary, and they forget the math, and then they have to do all this catching up. I mean, I speak from the experience of my three daughters are in that boat right now, and, yeah, so it would be great to tackle the problem of both of those things simultane- I mean, you've got one program for the, the early, you know, earlier grades, but when you get to the middle school and high school levels, especially high school, if there's a way to reconfigure the blocks so that it's a full year, I think you'd be doing everybody a huge service.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. All right, uh, the facility committee has been meeting, um, and tonight, we are here to request um, an allocation of funds for an architect to draw up a cost estimate in an architectural facility study. So we are asking um, for twenty, up to twenty thousand dollars out of the um, reserve funds to get that architect facility study done, and cost estimate for the middle school model, so that we can show it to you in June, and you can see what our concept is. Can I get someone to make a motion on that, and then we can talk about it?
So moved.
Thank you. Barbara, second?
I'll second.
Lauren, thank you. All right, um, discussion. Anybody, well, so anybody from the committee wanna talk about why we need this money?
In a nutshell, we asked the um, administrators and teachers what they needed, they gave us a list, and we're not architects, uh, so getting somebody to draw it up and make sure it works is, is a necessary step.
Are we still looking to put it in the field right here?
Well, that remains to be seen, but yeah.
That's what somebody would look at.
Right, we would look at that, yep. And how far out would we have to go, and blah, blah, blah.
And it wouldn't be an architectural detailed plan, it would be like a block plan.
I mean, we still say we can't do it like where they wanted to put the uh, community center, they wanted to work down there.
I, you know, the thing is, is that if we make it a separate building, then we cannot um, conserve uh, like cafeteria services, we'd have to have another cafeteria down there, we'd have to have another library, there's many things about um, what we're looking at that uses same spaces, but keeps the kids still separate. You know, so like having the cafeteria here, maybe having the nurse on this end of the building, so that they can access from, from both ends, um, instead, so it's an economy of savings in that way, if we cannot have.
But adding, adding another grade, isn't that gonna add more students to the small cafeterias we have here now?
Well, I don't know, we were looking at that, I mean, we're gonna have to do some, we're gonna have to do some upgrades to the space anyway, I mean, the kitchen needs an overhaul, it's pretty.
The kitchen's original.
Yeah, the kitchen is original.
I just remember when I was here, it was pretty tight in those cafeterias, even though.
Yeah, we know.
They still are.
We know we need more cafeteria space, even now.
That's what I mean.
So I, I think one of the things we were talking about was actually moving the wall out to the sidewalk, so that they would have actually bigger cafeteria space, and um, lunch space, or, you know, uh, the, where they make the food, that kitchen. Thank you, good lord. Sorry.
It's April.
So, um, but that, that is our thought, that's why we're trying not to go to a separate building, um, just because it, we have to replicate, um, and we'd also have to replicate a lot of people, you'd need two nurses, you'd need um, things like that, so.
And then you'd be creating a small school, because you'd be creating a school of about three hundred.
Okay.
The game fields won't take any of that space up, that's all, I know they use those fields.
Right, I know, I know. So, and we've talked about that, I mean, we're not exactly sure how far out we'd have to go to make sure that the kids had everything that they needed there, so um.
Or, you know, going backwards, or, you know, that's what we need an architect to look at, see what our options are.
You gotta go across the road there, right? So I mean, if you did, even maybe you could put a second story.
Right, yep.
Over, over the road, have classes there, nowhere else.
Yep, exactly, yep. That's definitely a potential.
Big old tunnel.
That's right, watch those buses go through.
With sewer augers, none of these rakes.
Right, I have that same look.
How are you gonna pick out all the nail clippers and stuff that you'll be there?
Don't even like thinking about this.
There're gonna be a container, and then you have to dump it anyway.
Like things found in the stomach of the turtle, things found in the, oh, god.
Oh, boy. All right, so anyway, so um, other discussion regarding this ask. This would not be completed fully, you know, disclosed plans, it's just to give us an idea of what we're looking at, um, major detailed plans would come later if we decided to move forward.
And additional services would be needed.
Exactly, yep.
Well, it sounds like a good way to move forward.
Yep, well, I think that's the only way we're gonna be able to look at this.
Better than table, ain't it?
Okay, all right, yeah, I know, right? Exactly. All right, um, well, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, well, we thank you for that, that'll allow us to start that project tonight, um, so good.
Today at two.
Right, yeah, there we go, all right. All right, Stafford Tech Center update, Kevin?
So um, I wrote a little, a report that I'm submitting for the minutes, um, short version is that Stafford is very well-run and does what they do very well, um, but they have capacity issues, and, and I think that this is a message for the public as much as the board, I think people maybe have too much faith in the fact that because Stafford exists, it can handle all the needs of kids, and, and that's not the, that's not the case. So I've got four, probably very brief, uh, issues that Stafford has that we should keep in mind. Uh, it's at ninety-five percent capacity, that, that amounts to, uh, there are ten open slots for students, but nine of the fourteen um, of programs have waiting lists. Um, and in particular, the tech exploratory program, that's for the youngest kids, has thirty-five applicants for sixteen seats, which means that for um, a fourteen-year-old, it's, or I, I think it's fourteen-year-olds, it's, it's harder to get into this program than it is to get into UVM, and that applies for um, uh, the, the welding program too, and um, may, may for others as well. So the picture is of a, a system that, that can't meet the demand for skilled trades education in the, in the county. Um, capacity currently stands at two-hundred-and-twenty-nine students if there are no new hires for teachers, and that was, the next issue, which is staff recruitment and retention, is an issue, um, I'm gonna use welding as an example, um, there's as much as a thirty-thousand-dollar a year difference between teaching welding at Stafford and working as a welder, so that's a huge disincentive for people who may be interested. In addition, you have to have a teaching certificate, so there's a second hurdle there, um, and it really means that the people who are teaching welding uh, have to be, uh, have a vocation to teach, um, and it, it's very difficult to find people willing to give up that, that amount of money. Um, so currently Stafford's only got one welding teacher, um, and that means there are only sixteen students enrolled in that program, we know that demand is much, much higher, there was thirty-two students just, I think, a year ago. Um, Stafford's also looking for a health careers teacher, it's in year two of that search, um, and there's a search for an engineering teacher as well, um, so applicants for these are in the very low um, numbers, uh, single digits, or it's sometimes zero, so that's a continuing issue. Um, and then the third one is aging and obsolete equipment, this is always an issue with uh, any kind of career or tech ed. It's particularly bad, as, as we all know, in the age of, of digital technologies, so it's, it's, it's very, very difficult to keep up, um, and then the example here is that um, there, the school has a two-thousand-four Mini Cooper with a standard transmission and a two-thousand-seven Prius, um, both on their last legs. The Stafford Board voted to authorize the purchase of replacement vehicle in March, um, but that's just one example, it's, um, equipment's always a problem. Um, and then the last um, issue that we, we didn't really have anything to do or worry about, is that uh, the career ed reorganization is part of the state um, realignment in school districts and, and education in general. So Stafford's great, um, but it's also, um, it's got these basically space limitations, um, and, and we have to keep that in mind for our students. Uh, just wanna add that our new welding program, which is gearing up, is um, is one of the reasons it's useful, is because it teaches the simple stuff, and it's gonna prepare our kids to be competitive to get into that welding program, should they choose to continue in that, and if they don't, it gives them some basic education that they can use, um, you know, in, in their lives, um, otherwise. So that's that, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, so you said there's openings, are they finding that certain programs aren't being utilized as much?
Yes.
And are they considering sunsetting some programs?
I don't know.
To allow for?
That's a great question, I, I can't speak for them that they're considering sunsetting programs, I think that's a discussion that's um, always ongoing. I don't know about anything specific this year, though. We have a couple of things kind of in the works, potentially to add to our offerings uh, within our supervisory union for um, additional opportunities for students for work-based learning, uh, and also for uh, career awareness down to the elementary level. So when those are a little bit further fleshed out, we will bring those to the board to, so that you're aware of what we're planning. so that you're aware of what we're planning.
What's downstairs now? There's wood shop on one end, there's welding in the middle, and something on the, what's on the other side?
Welding's being added on the.
In the old lumber room, yeah.
Oh, it's our bashing lumber room?
Yeah.
So what's on the other side of there?
There's a classroom and then there's basically woodworking equipment and then there's the welding. Um, and there's, in the classroom, there are some 3D printers, um.
Is the woodworker shop still there?
Yeah, it's basically the same as it was, yeah.
It's kind of an open concept. An open concept with, um, so they could do small engine work, they can.
In the classroom?
No, actually they do that out into that big space. Like they've taken the shop and sort of, I guess you would say sort of, I don't want to say minim- minimalized it. It's not a word. They made it more minimal so that, um, you can sort of get things from the side walls and bring them into, um, sort of the middle. So like I said, you can work on woodworking in one place, small engines in another.
I think the small engines are on carts, so.
Yeah, yeah. They made it, so it's a flexi, it's a more flexible area, I guess that's what I would say. Yeah.
It's a shop multipurpose room. Give it to Lori, she'll come up with a name for it.
Yeah.
I haven't been there, well, I've only been there to see the public safety part and I saw the health and human services side of it as well. So, um, but yeah, it's a beautiful space down there. Okay, all right, well, um, keep us updated, Kevin, as you find out more. All right, um, other business, anything that we need to be thinking about? I guess at this point I would just ask, uh, if anybody's been following with the legislature and the governor's proposal for, um, education. That's been fun to watch, um, I have to say. So, um, last I knew, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the House wants to kick the can down the road and study stuff over the summer. And Senate's like, no, we want to do something now, so. Um, and, uh, Governor Scott has threatened to keep them all up there until they do something, so, um, wow.
Hot time in the whole town tonight.
I know, right, yeah, exactly. So there's all, is, well, yeah, so the, um, right. So I don't know if you wanted to talk about any of that.
Well, that's just, that was going to be my intro into my.
Oh, there you go.
Into my informational component. Uh, yes, please follow, uh, what's going on at the legislature cause there's the, there's the path of the, of the, of the House bill, which is trying to add, to slow things down because the concern is if you're doing all of these things and you're focusing purely on the governance and the funding, you're losing sight of a lot of different things. Uh, but at the same time, it's also more of a focus on, um, there's still a lot of status quo within, within the legislative bill or within the, within the congressional bill. So, uh, for me, what I keep bringing up and, um, I want to make sure, and I'm, I'm, Debbie and, and Brenda are probably tired of it, but when this first came out, it was about governance, it was about funding, and it was about educational quality. The, it really seems that that component of educational quality has really fallen by the wayside. And we're just talking about, um, we're just talking about governance. Who's going to be in, uh, who's going to be in whose school district or supervisory union? Will there be school choice, et cetera? But for me, it, it's really about what are we hoping to accomplish for our students in Vermont? We have achievement gaps all over the state. There, if you look at the, the, the links that are provided in some of our presentations for schools that are listed as Equity One, it's all over the state. It's not just one or two schools, it's all over the state. So, um, if the foundational formula is going to tie to improving outcomes for all students, whether they're free and reduced lunch or special education or historically marginalized or anybody else or English language learners, then great, let's talk about it, let's make sure that we're laying down those plans. I don't think that you can disconnect those things from these initial conversations because then, well, here's your money, now you as a local school district, you can choose to do with it what you will. Sounds a lot like Act 46. That's where we are right now. So what will be different if we get an allocation through the foundation formula? And then it's up to us to decide how we're going to serve our kids. It's, you know, doing it all over again. So that's my concern. I really believe that we need a North Star, we need to stick to it and make sure that we're taking care of the kids and leaving a lot of this adult stuff to, to be done at the same time and certainly not forgotten. But the adult stuff can't be the number one thing. So. Uh, and speaking of that, do you want to kind of give your theory on the yield bill? Or do you want to save that for later? Now save it for later. Yeah, so we have a few.
I know I had a theory on the yield bill.
Yeah, you did, so. As, as a quick reminder, the governor had, so there was a yield bill that, that was, uh, or I, that was shared with us where, um, Brenda's prediction of where the yield would land only changed by a dollar.
Wow.
And so, and that was after $77 million were.
One-time money.
Where one-time money had been given to, um, given to the schools or given to, to reduce taxes. And so we're unsure as to, um, if that $77 million is a good expense, if it only changed the, the outcome by not even a percentage point on our taxes.
That would be throughout the state, right?
Right, so our taxpayers will not see any benefit to that $77 million that has been given, um, allocated.
So then they should just hold on to it and use it for something else.
Yeah, yeah, so, so what happened was that at, um, the December 1st letter, they announced a statewide yield. And they said it's based on a CLA statewide of 72%. In the end of December, when they, um, had all of our townwide yields, the real numbers came out, the statewide real number was 72.36%, so it was a little bit higher. So the fact that that was a little bit higher means the yield should have been a little higher. So when I made the adjustment to the yield for that 36.36 of a percent, I got to where we are within $1 of the 77 million. So I'm not understanding why it's not already at the number and then the 77 million comes in on top of it and none of my colleagues are either. So I'm not exactly sure the calculations of the most recent yield bill that's being floated.
Is it a political move? I mean, to say, oh, I'm putting money in to help save you and.
I don't know, but as we talked, is, is what you just surmised, if it's only going to be that small for everyone, then we should hold on to it and maybe save it to, you know, we'd rather see you fund universal meals instead of the governor's pos, proposal which stops that.
Would it pay for universal meals?
Well, right now the, uh.
The state does.
Yeah, I know, would the 77 million be enough?
Last time I knew, I think it was $40 million for universal meals. But that's unsure because that included a federal component that I don't know if will be adjusted as well.
Right, the, uh, the, the number that you'll see in the paper is about $20 million for the, the allocation for the.
State.
For, for the, the state's allocation for, for universal meals. But right now in the governor's plan, he's not including the money for universal meals.
That would be sad.
Okay, um, anything else?
Happy, anything else happy?
That was not a good way to end the meeting.
I know, right?
For Stafford is having problems, they can't.
Hannaford Career Center, do we know, is that maxed out? I don't know if it's the other way. Do you have any idea if they're totally?
I don't know, we don't have a rep on Hannaford, so.
Cause if they have school, we have school choice, it depends, kids of that.
It's three times the cost.
Yeah, it is three times.
Not get school choice, then you can do whatever, it'd all work.
Yeah, it's three times the cost.
Still three times the cost. That's why we only send our diesel mechanic kids up there and our art kids and although we don't have any of those. And we also are sending some health students up that way.
We'll send students, so students can go to Hannaford if, um, the program doesn't exist at Stafford or if the Stafford program is over-enrolled.
It's three times the cost because it's Middlebury?
Cause it's its own district.
Yeah.
It's its own district, it sets its own.
Okay. All right, so nothing else you want to tell us? No jokes or anything?
No, I don't have anything.
No April Fools?
All right.
No.
Ah, darn it. All right, so, um, our next OVU facilities committee meeting is Tuesday, April 29th. That date was changed, um, due to a scheduling conflicts. But our next OVU board meeting is here Tuesday, May 6th, 6 o'clock. Be there, be square. I think we've already done executive session tonight, so.
Correct.
I would be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to mention that until April 16th?
Oh, right, before we do that, sorry. Um, there is a potential for April 16th that we need to have an emergency meeting. We could do it just via Zoom, correct?
A special meeting, yeah.
A special meeting via Zoom, so keep your eye on your email. Um, so.
I'm sorry, what was the date of that?
Uh, April 16th, so.
It's Wednesday?
It is a Wednesday, yep.
Um, also, I'm going to be out of the country, so I don't know if you guys want to prepare for who's doing minutes while I'm gone or if you're just going to pass that along.
It's your job to find somebody.
I think that's his job, over there.
Just want you guys to know.
Oh, yeah, him.
When are you gone again, Anna?
I leave May 3rd and come back the 17th. So I think there might just be one or maybe two meetings, maybe just one.
I think it's just the one, but okay, thank you for letting us know. All right, um, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, you're welcome. And I think I already heard it, so, um, feel free to leave.